Anything else? If not, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Peter?
Welcome to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. If you have come to make a statement, ask a question, or represent a group or activity, we would like to recognize your presence. School employees, parents, and members of the public are expected to treat one another with civility, courtesy, and respect in words and actions. You will have three minutes to speak to the board. No one may speak more than one time. As you speak, keep in mind the following. Preface your comments by providing your name and group affiliation if any. Comments made to the board are public comments. All statements should be directed to the full board. No person may address or question board members individually. Public comments which are harassing or repetitive will be stopped. Personal attacks are not permitted under any circumstances. If your speech becomes inflammatory, we will ask you to leave the podium. It is the policy of the WCCS Board to listen to your comments or questions. However, we do not respond during the meeting.
Peter Gangler. Another word on your wall there, professionalism. Professionalism is acting to a code of ethics or laws, something you have been failing to do. Ms. Devine, more specifically, the person I've been speaking about or intending to clarify, is a private citizen. She does not work for her. She is in no way affiliated with the school, other than she sends her child there. Definition of policy. A course or principle of action adopted or proposed by a government party, business, or individual, right? Now, law. In essence, laws are formal rules of the land, while policies are the guidelines that help organizations and government achieve their objectives. Meaning, you obey the law, you use it, you, how you do that is you use policy in line with the law. As a private citizen, she does not fall under your purview, nor does any parent, when it comes to punishment in any way, shape, or form, or curtailing their right, which you do not have the right to do. As Americans, we have access to the Fifth Amendment. The Fifth Amendment, or the due process clause, protects individuals from federal government interference, not just federal government, but all government, which you people represent. You are the government when it comes to the school board. You are duly elected officials. No state, this is under the Fourteenth Amendment, shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. The letter Dr. McDermott issued to Ms. Devine did exactly that. Deprived her of, one, the First Amendment right of free speech to any public official; two, it violated her Fifth Amendment right of due process under the law. If you go to the courts, you can do that. But you do not, you here do not make a court. You do not have the authority of a court. Heck, until last week, you haven't even voted on an attorney yet. So, I don't know. Thirty seconds. I don't know what you all think you're doing. You need to quit violating people's rights. Your so-called claim of a policy fails because policy is only enforceable when there is not a law that specifically addresses what the policy is meant to do. And that you have failed in that. That concludes public comment. Next are action items. Dr. McDermott, I'll turn it over to you for the adjunct teacher permits and employment agreements.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We have three adjunct permits. Melanie Curry, we've provided a permit before. She teaches American Sign Language for us, and this is the third year for that. Sarah Kirkpatrick, she is job skills coach. So, you approved last spring an adjunct permit for her to take that role as job skills coach. And then Angela, Angelica Moyer. So, she was working for us as jobs for graduates, basically in our JAG program. And when the funding was discontinued for the JAG program, and Bright Point also dropped their funding, so we discontinued the JAG program. So, Sarah has a Bachelor of Science, and she's being recommended to teach business. Specifically, she would teach freshman classes, preparing for college and career, freshman seminar, and personal finance. Those are all topics that she covered in her JAG role, jobs for America's graduates. Those are all things that she covered with students that she worked with. So, she's being recommended for a adjunct teacher permit for the high school. Those are the three teacher permits we are recommending.
So, Sarah, Angelies, and?
And Melanie.
Melanie. Okay. Does anyone have any questions regarding these? We'll vote on each one individually. Do I have a motion for approval of Sarah's permit?
Can we just vote on all three of them at the same time? Okay. I move that we approve the adjunct teacher permit for Melanie Curry.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
I move that we approve the adjunct teacher's permit for Sarah Kirkpatrick. Did I say that right?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
And I move that we approve the adjunct teacher's permit for Angelique Moyer.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to the adjunct teacher employment agreements.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith, and I'm going to apologize here. We got the first employment agreement posted for Melanie Curry, and that is, she'll teach six classes, American Sign Language, for a salary of forty-eight thousand, two hundred. And then Sarah Kirkpatrick will be doing, being our job skills coach, and her reimbursement rate is eighteen sixty-seven per hour, for a total of twenty-four thousand, one seventy-seven. And then Angelique Moyer, who, again, was our JAG teacher, has four years' experience, will be teaching, preparing for college and careers, freshman seminar, and personal finance. So, she'll have six classes. She'll be full-time, and she would also come in at forty-eight thousand, two hundred.
Any questions?
Are these similar rates that a teacher, I guess, a normal certified teacher would have as well? Is that, is it in the vicinity, or the, is that, is this the norm?
It's close. We, because they have bachelor's degrees, we look at their experience within the field, which you have to look at as well in order to give a permit, and then we place them in a similar, basically similar lane.
Are they eligible for benefits?
No.
No, okay.
No. When they come in and you award them a permit, they are underclassified, although the, the state allows us to count them in our sixty-five percent for instruction, because they all provide more than fifty percent of their day is student instruction. So, we can count their salary and their benefits in our sixty-five percent under certified, but they are not certified, and they don't fall under, like turf, that kind of thing. They're, they're separate from.
Good questions. Any other questions? Would, would ask for a motion for approval of Angelies Moyer?
I move for the approval of the contract for the adjunct teacher, Angelica Moyer.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Now ask for a motion for Melanie Curry.
I motion for the approval of the contract for adjunct teacher, Melanie Curry.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. And then for Sarah Kirkpatrick.
I move for the approval of contract, contract for adjunct teacher, Sarah Kirkpatrick.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is approval of superintendent search organization. This would be the university search team. We, we interviewed them and, at our last executive session. Does anyone have any questions regarding that? If there are none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I'm going to recuse myself, because I was not at that meeting.
I motion for the approval of the engagement of the university's search team to conduct a superintendent search process for a WCCS.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Jill, stains? All the rest are yes. That concludes action items. Move on to agenda items, and there are a number of bylaw or policy changes, and so I'll turn it over to Dr. McDermott.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. There are eight on the work session agenda for tonight. There will be six coming, six or seven coming to you work session in September. I told you there would be several, so this is the first of those.
Just to clarify, this is not a first reading or anything. You're just introducing the changes to us tonight.
I'm just walking you through them.
Awesome.
So, if you have any questions, please let me know. First read will be the next board meeting. Second read will be the board meeting in September. Okay?
And it's second reading and adoption, is that usually how it goes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, you're right. Thank you. So, this first one is a change in bylaw. It's O one four two, election appointment, and it's required by House Enrolled Act ten oh two, Public Law two fourteen. Statute, Indiana Code statute twenty twenty-six four nine amended the minimum age requirement to run from school to, for school board from twenty-one to eighteen. So, we have to make a change in our bylaw. Right now, it says twenty-one years of age, and we have to change it to eighteen years of age. And then the second one is twenty-four ten, audio and videotaping of meetings. And this one, House Enrolled Act twelve eighty-five prohibits a school from adopting a policy that prohibits a parent from recording an IEP meeting, basically a case conference. Since this is a prohibition, Julia Slavin said there's no need to adopt a policy on the prohibition. However, we already had a policy, a standing policy, so the recommendation is to repeal this policy and rely on two other policies that we have, and I did talk to Tim Shelley about this. We have a policy eighty-three fifty-five, authorization for audio, video, and digital recording, and then we also have a policy ninety-one sixty, public attendance at school events. So, these policy contains statements regarding parents recording and posting copyrighted material. So, basically, if they come in and record the play that the kid's put on, and it's a copyrighted play, a parent cannot post that. So, it protects us if a parent goes ahead and posts that. It also protects us against information, if parent comes in, records a meeting in which her child's being discussed, but other children, either the parent or whoever, mentions other kids in the process, and a parent posts that, that's not allowed. And so, the, the other two policies cover us for those situations. So, the recommendation is that we repeal twenty-four ten and rely on the other two. The next one is thirty-one twenty-one forty-one twenty-one, is personal background checks and mandatory reporting of convictions and substantiated child abuse arrests. This revision, again, is recommended due to House Enrolled Act ten oh two, which changes twenty, Indiana Code twenty twenty-six five, twenty point five. That statute was repealed. It required that a school board adopt a policy requiring school administration to do reference checks on an applicant before being hired. Instead of entirely deleting the reference checks for the application, applicant, the recommendation is to change the language from must to should. So, you'll see where we've, the strike through that before a corporation hires the applicant, the references must be obtained, and we changed it to should be obtained prior to the applicant being employed or hired. We still want to do reference checks, and we want to do them of the most recent employers of the perspective of the applicant. But we cannot keep the must because of the change in legislation, basically.
I was just going to ask why the change? Why, why, why the wording like that? To take something from must to should is awfully open.
It is. Well, they've dropped it. So, they dropped the Indiana Code, they repealed the code, which required reference checks at all. We still want to make sure we're doing reference checks. So, it's still on our.
Are you still not hire if you have a background? Is that still permissible for hiring criteria? Just, it's just now not required?
Correct.
Got it.
Correct. But we're still going to make sure our administrators do reference checks, because that's important.
How do you ensure that? How do you?
Basically, when they fill out a form, so they fill out a recommendation form, a recommend, recommendation to hire and send it over. I have to approve it, and it goes to HR, to Lori Lou. And on that form are these little boxes, which say, did you check the, with the most, with the prior employer? And then they have to date it, and who did they talk to, basically on the form. And so, you know, if that's filled out, then they've done their due diligence, and Lori's Lou is very good about following up with that, if, if they haven't done that, and ask, why didn't you, or why haven't you? And I will say, in the policy, says reference checks must be documented, so that's still there, including documenting reference checks conducted by telephone. Then it tells, you know, the question should only relate to the applicant's suitability for employment, work, performance, and personal skills. And of course, we do background checks. They have to have that ahead of time. Prior to any reference checking, the applicant is asked to sign a release granting the corporation permission to contact any person listed as a reference. And then if someone doesn't list their current employer, and they are serious, in serious consideration for a job, we call them back and ask them for permission to contact their current employer, because we will not move forward unless we have permission to contact their current, their current employer.
Doesn't that put them in, if I was applying for a job, there's no way I would have you reference my current employer, because if I didn't get it, it puts me in jeopardy with my current employer.
But basically, it comes down to, if you're the, the last person, if you're the one that we're going to put up, or we're going to say, yes, we want you.
Right.
We want to talk to your current employer before we do that.
And then, as James said, you find out something from that employer, that you change your, your mind about this person, so that there is that.
There is that possibility, yeah. But it also says that the board shall deny employment to an applicant, well, that talks about if they've been convicted of offense, but it also talks, oh, falsification of information during the interview or on the application shall be grounds for immediate removal from consideration for a position or dismissal from a currently held position. So, that's in there. And that's also on our forms as well, that statement.
I guess to comment a little bit with what Tom said, in the language of it, and I'm not a contract expert attorney, but instead of, I, I see where we take out must be obtained, and we're leaving should, and I think Tom mentioned that a little bit, would it not be maybe better to use the word may? Because I feel like that might, I, like, the, the word should versus must, and then may, I feel like we, maybe a lawyer would be able to answer that maybe better, but it kind of feels to me like the, the whole should, but what, we should, but we didn't this time, or, you know, the word may gives you off the hook a little easier. I've just seen the word may a lot versus should.
Is Julia Slavin's an attorney? And this is coming from the recommendations from ISBA, right?
Yes.
I, I, I understand, I, I definitely agree with, you know, questioning the wording and everything.
Yeah.
But I know that there are things behind the wording that come from the recommendations from ISBA.
That's why, yeah, I wanted to know.
There, there, there's a reason, but.
I'm sure there is, I just, I'm curious.
To me, it feels like should is stronger than may.
Yeah.
You know? And the, the expecta, and I, I like the fact that then in turn, you know, they, administrator couldn't just skip that and it'd slide through, because superintendent was going to make certain that that takes place.
You know, it was interesting at our conference down in Atlanta, that I went to a seminar on hiring, and if I remember right, some of this was in there, and the, the open interpretation of hiring is a really big deal. And, I mean, they were talking as far as, you know, just even getting a name wrong, because they didn't use the right middle initial on our reference check, or fake names, people, you know, so this is, this is a big deal.
Check with your legislature to see why they changed it from shall or must to, to shall, because that it is, it came straight from, they dropped that, so it came straight from the legislation. And I know that they're trying to deregulate things, but sometimes it just doesn't make sense.
Other questions about that one?
Nope.
Middle initials also are required. So, now, so like when they fill out, you have to fill out, you have to put your middle initial. Don't have to put your middle name, but you have to put your middle initial, so.
Do we have a timeline that we go back, like how far on things, or if?
We usually try and cover the last three employers, if they've had that many. Now, if they're just out of college or whatever.
Yeah.
They may have only had one or two. So, but we usually try and do at least three.
Is there a, a time part of that too, like a five years, if they've had three jobs in less six months?
Oh, that we look at as, do we even want to interview this person? Because if they bounce around a lot, there's a problem.
And then on the other end is someone who's had the same job for twenty-five years, so you're not going to be able to find.
Yep.
Three living employers, probably, for reference checks in that case.
Well, and frequently, they've, you know, well, so-and-so retired, or, you know, so that happens too.
Have we ran into anything here in the last couple of years where it was just, oh, boy, what did we, what did we get ourselves into here, or how did we, how did we arrive at this point in terms of hiring? Has there been any red flags? Without detail?
Yeah, we've had a couple of situations where we've had to go back. Yeah, we have. I wouldn't say it's been within the last couple of years. I would say it's been within the last five to seven.
What was that public law number?
It, it, House Enrolled Act ten oh two. I didn't, I don't have the conversion to public, public law on that one. I just know the statute, Indiana Code twenty twenty-six five, twenty point five, was repealed. I didn't write down that, that public law conversion. The other one is thirty-two twenty point oh one, Teacher Appreciation Grant. This one, we are also going to have to repeal, because there is no longer a teacher appreciation grant the way we know it. It's now a competitive. Grant that we have to write. And so we don't need a policy on it. Just have to write the grant and follow the grant, what the uh, grant says.
And we can choose not to apply.
We can. We can. Yeah. And then um, Board Policy fifty one eleven, determination of legal settlement and eligibility for enrollment of students without legal settlement. This one I mentioned last time. Basically, um, policy is House Enrolled Act ten sixty four or Public Law one fifty three. It eliminates the prohibition on a student transferring from one district to another for athletic reasons. So in this entire policy. What we're crossing out is sentence, no transfer, students shall be accepted for enrollment for athletic reasons. So we have to take that out. And then Board Policy fifty two hundred attendance. And this one, we're changing revisions are recommended as a result of Senate Enrolled Act four eighty two and House Enrolled Act eleven sixty. Changes include an exemption to compulsory attendance to allow for up to six days absence to attend an event offered by the National or State FFA. Or and or four H club. So the principal must approve the absence in writing. After a parent provides a written request for the absence, the student must be in good academic standing. Also, the truancy prevention plan was expanded to grade twelve from grade six. Used to be K six, now it's K twelve. And we have ten days instead of five um, for to hold the attendance conference with the parents. Um, we also for next year only. For the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year, and this is in our policy. A student will not be suspended or expelled solely for being habitual truant, missing ten or more unexcused absences. Or being chronically absent, missing eighteen or more days during the school year. Now, there was a question from um, administration, particularly at the high school. So if we put a student on a Form sixteen, which is. Uh, kind of basically a waiver for expulsion, suspension. And mandate that the student attend. Could they then be expelled for insubordination? And yes, they could be. So. It's it's a workaround, but I, you know, I don't know that we typically expel just for attendance issues anyway. We try and work with the family to try and get the kids to school. So.
Well, you have to bring that back since there was that one year um, stipulation in there, twenty five, twenty six.
Well, it says it states for the twenty five, twenty six school year. So it'll just kind of.
So we can just leave it in there and it it's.
Yeah, it'll be null and void after that point. Anyway, it just makes it a longer policy.
Am I the only one who gets stopped in Ace Hardware to have someone talk to me about our attendance policy? Because it is a, it's a hot topic in the county, in the town and everywhere I go, hey. Yeah, I get a lot of that. So and reading the FFA four H thing, I'm I'm all for it. I think that there is a giant can of worms there and the word discrimination. I I won't touch, but I just I look at that and I think, boy, I don't know, you know?
I understand. We're following the House enroll. That was Senate enroll. They had two of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything.
Um, the next one is Board Policy. Again, these are all um. I don't make these changes myself. I I contact Julie Slavens sends them, our comprehensive policy management service. So uh, revision of Board Policy fifty three thirty, use of medications. So this one is requested due to House Enrolled Act thirteen seventy six. Which amended the definition of emergency medications to expand the definition of naloxone. And that definition is codified in the Indiana Code twenty thirty four, four point five, zero point two. So where we have to change here. Is um, there's a big portion of cross through. But the FDA has redefined its approved opioid overdose reversal medication. Including nasal spray. So that's a new definition where ours used to just say um. Overdose administration drug. And then it goes on for emergency use and it it defines drug overdose. It talks about naloxone. It talks about opioid, defines opioid. And then it talks about our nurses have um, kept stores in the buildings in case they need them. And our health department has provided those for us. So and they have training. Anybody who uses it has to have training. It's like our SROs. Our SROs also have training to provide that if need be. So and from what I understand, it's not. If they give it to someone, they suspect it's an opioid overdose and if they're not, it doesn't hurt them. But if they are, it saves their life. So that's where that comes in. Um, the change there. And then eighty three fifty five, authorization for audio, video and digital recording. Again, what we're um, striking through is the reference to Board Policy twenty four ten. So we're just striking through that reference. And then um, Policy eighty four hundred, school safety. Revision of that policy again is uh, House Enrolled Act ten oh two. The section of Indiana Code twenty thirty four, three twenty four, which relates to stop the bleed program has been repealed. And it's no longer, those programs are no longer required in schools. And I will tell you, that program has been problematic for us all the way along because it's expensive to get the kits. It's expensive to get the training. And it has been difficult for us.
Don't they provide it for free?
Uh, no.
I've bended the one at Parkview a couple of times for free.
Well, they haven't done it. I mean, we've worked with Amy, Amy Biggs. We worked with her emergency management for. Months to get kits in some of our buildings and to get training for some of our staff. Because the way the policy was written, you had to train, not just the nurse or not just, I mean, there was a section of people that you had to train. So then you have professional development. So you have release time. You have all of that other stuff involved. So basically what we're striking is the whole stop the bleed policy, uh, portion of this policy. And those are the eight that will come up for first read next board meeting.
Any questions? The next item on the agenda is uh, DAF laptop Chromebook purchase. Seth?
Thank you. So tonight, this is a, this is a preview of the August business meeting. Just wanted to kind of share this, the purchase details with you before um, I ask you to recommend or I recommend approval, the vote to approve. The purchase. So we last purchased devices for our staff and administrators in two thousand twenty. So they're they're approaching five years of age um, for for laptops. Again, just. Things, things wear out is kind of the the story here. And so as as we look at sort of the modern.
It's kind of like dog years.
Kind of. Seems like it in technology, right? In terms of how fast things rapidly change. Um, so in terms of just the 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 current demands, obviously, since two thousand twenty, things have changed. Teaching has changed. Uh, content is now more online than it was previously. Um, teachers are being asked to participate in. Video conferences and all sorts of things that they weren't before. And so. What 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 we're looking at at this point are are it's it's really disheartening is when we have teachers come to meetings, the the first thing they do is. Grab a portable charger and plug it in because the battery lasts, you know, an hour or two hours. Um, and so it it creates some efficiency issues, obviously, from a teaching standpoint. The mobility in the classroom is is difficult as well. And so. What what we're going to recommend, and we worked with our technology committee last spring to kind of look at. What teachers need, what teachers are doing, how they're using their devices, uh, most commonly and. For for the most part, as as you guys know, a lot of the curriculum we're now adopting is online. And so it's it's hosted online. The the presence of the physical textbook is a little bit, um, is a little bit decreased. And so that means a lot of the work of our teachers is is done through a browser rather than through installed programs like maybe was the case in the past. And so we're recommending that um, we we purchase. Chromebook Plus, Lenovo Chromebook Plus devices. I have a sample here if you want to take a look at it. It's it is not. When you think student Chromebook, this is not a student Chromebook. Um, it's it's a lot more similar to, you know, a modern MacBook or a of very nice laptop. Um, but the benefit of the Chromebook is it comes with the extended battery life. So these will have twelve hour battery lives or more. The advertised limit on this battery is seventeen hours and I've seen that in use. So that that's pretty common. Um, it allows us again, from a district standpoint, to have greater efficiency. Because with Chromebooks, we can manage those remotely through the push of a button without ever having to touch the device to do imaging and and various updates. Um, it also gives us a significantly lower cost. The last Windows device purchase we made, um, using the device that teachers currently have is over a thousand dollars. And these devices are going to come in at about six hundred and fifty dollars apiece. So again, significant savings over what a similar Windows based device would have. Um, and again, an operational lifespan of ten years in terms of Google support. But we would anticipate to see it being in use for six years pretty reasonably. Um, and a lot of that is because of the update capabilities of a Chromebook versus a Windows device. So recommending that that we go through the purchase process for three hundred of the Lenovo Chromebook Plus fourteen devices. They're two in one devices, so they've got multiple uses. Um, additionally. We're gonna buy, and this is because it's under the threshold, we're gonna buy fifty Windows laptops that are very specific for those who need Windows based programs. And so that comes under the fifty thousand dollar threshold um, for the board to to have to approve. Um, but those devices will go to fifteen high school teachers. Photography, CAD, computer science, various PLTW courses where they they do have to have. The online or the the Windows based products. Um, it'll also go to our administrators because our administrative devices are the same ones our teachers have. So that is the recommendation. Any questions?
How's it getting made?
So these are funded through the twenty twenty four geo bond, which had technology, infrastructure, hardware improvements in there along with. I think the Northern Heights Roof Project and Coasey Roof Projects.
Okay.
And the fifty are included in this.
Correct. Yeah. And the fifty are coming out of the geo bond and because there is um. A student use component or a that it's very specific to programs, it's also going to be partially funded under Title Four grants because of that. That um, special programs qualification.
For the old devices, are those kept for like a substitute or like how are how are those repurposed or are they just that kept as loaders?
Yeah, we will. We'll keep the old devices for, let me say, a short period of time. They'll they'll reach their maximum age and then we'll have to, we'll have to surplus them out. But um, because of some changes that are happening instructionally, these may have to be turned into mobile computer labs. You know, when we look at computer science now as part of the curriculum, that's something that our eighth graders may be taking, our ninth graders may be taking. And we only have two functional computer labs at the high school for the specific program. So um, we'll reason for that. We'll reason for subs. Student teachers will get them. They may be used in kiosk mode for for various purposes. So they will get used. Um, of the of the three hundred or so that are in rotation, about about seventy five are. At the end of life in terms of battery and whatnot. So, you know, those will be disposed of, but the ones that are good and that can be repurposed. We'll keep and we'll repurpose for as long as as long as we can.
How do we dispose of them?
There's a couple of options. Um, and we've got options. So what what I would recommend is we go through a surplus bid process. And there's a number of companies that'll buy them for recycled value. They may have, they may have a value of a dollar apiece. They may have a value of thirty dollars apiece. We've got a lot of um. The MacBooks are going to have some value. We've got some iPads that we're pulling out as well with the kindergarten and first grade kids getting getting Chromebooks. So those will have some value. So if we go through a surplus process for all of those and have some companies bid on those. Um, there's several in the area that will will pay us on the spot, take them away and clean them up and give us a report that indicates every, all the data's been wiped, washed and been certified.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Laura, I'll turn it over to you on opening of the school year calendar because I'm certain I'll mess up the dates.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and board members. Um, you are invited. So our opening day is August the eleventh, Monday. We'll start with continental breakfast at seven forty five and we'll have a very short, very short program at eight thirty, probably last maybe an hour. Um, and then we'll release teachers to go back to their buildings for building specific professional development. On August twelfth, we have all instructional staff professional development. So we're going to have a keynote. Um, our speaker is Tom Murray. He's a nationally recognized education thought leader speaker and bestselling author. He's the Director of Innovation for Future Ready Schools and co-founder of Future Focus Schools. He promotes student centered learning and digital innovation with a background as both a teacher and a principal. He brings a deep understanding of the challenges and opportunities educators face today. So his big push is going to be talking about how to connect to students, their experiences and how to make assignments that are relevant. Um, so after the keynote, which will be about forty minutes. Uh, teachers in grades four to eight will stay the rest of the morning with um, Tom Murray. All others are going to return to their buildings for PD created and led by their instructional coaches or principals. And um. Then August thirteenth and fourteenth will again be building led professional development. Focused on their individual school improvement plans along with required training, which includes a myriad of things. The um. Bullying and um. What was the other? Oh, cumulative, our change in Skyward from Skyward to cumulative, which is our um, student information. Um, system. And there's some other things that they're going to do. Um, there. Our Special Education Director Susan Har Harmeyer and Kristi Miller, Assistant Director, will also be leading PD for the Special Education Staff. On those two days. And then August fifteenth is our first student day.
So what are the times that start on the eleventh and twelfth?
So on the eleventh, seven forty five, and uh, the meeting will start at eight thirty. And on the twelfth, we are starting at eight, right?
Eight.
Eight. Yeah. So the keynote with Tom Murray will start at eight. And then after that, he'll have the teachers eight to nine thirty for the keynote and then he'll have the teachers until noon. Grades four to eight, well, instructional staff, grades four to eight.
Okay. I would. I know schedules get in the way, uh, work schedules and other things. If it's possible to be there, uh, especially on the eleventh. I think it's uh, you know, I think it. It sends a good message to the, to our team. When as many people can be there. And again, I get it. It's not always easy, but uh, if you can, I would really encourage it. So.
Where do you go? Where is it?
At the high school.
High school.
Yeah, the the breakfast would be out in the cafeteria area and then in the um, auditorium. Any questions about that? If not, our next board meeting is August the eighteenth. And then next work session is Tuesday, uh, September the second because of Labor Day. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you. And we are, where are we meeting? What room?
Uh, eight.
Okay, so Catty Corner.